Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those who are physically present with us tonight in the council chamber, if you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance, and if you would, please present it to the city clerk. Speakers who are physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. Our city clerk will be making a Zoom broadcasting announcement at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of May 11th is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 894-5850-4539, and enter password number 606775. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the city council, and city council is the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace for May 11th, 2021. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Father Andrew Lesko. He's the sheriff's chaplain for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. He is with us via Zoom. Following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, Father Lesko, please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. O heavenly King, the Comforter of Spirit of Truth, who are present everywhere, filling all things, we thank you for the benefits that you have bestowed upon us and this great city of Grand Terrace. We thank you for our mayor, city council members, and all city employees who work to make this such a great place to live and to work. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to pause to remember all those who have been afflicted by the COVID-19 pandemic, those who have died, those who are still suffering, and those who are recovering from this affliction. We also pray for the welfare of the doctors, nurses, medical workers, first responders, and all others working to ease the pain and suffering of all those afflicted. And as we begin this meeting, we pray that you grant us your wisdom, your strength, patience, and understanding that whatever we accomplish in the course of this meeting will be beneficial to our city and to the glory of your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father Andrew, for being here with us tonight. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Present.
Mayor Mcnebo.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering additions to or removal of items from the agenda tonight?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. We have no special presentations, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be, they will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? All right. See, none. All entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please call the vote.
And before we do, I will go ahead and read the title of the ordinance that is on consent.
Would you please read the title, Mr. City Attorney?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, adding Chapter 2.06 to Title II Administration and Personnel of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code Authorizing Electronic and Paper Methods of Filing Campaign Finance Disclosure Statements. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
Mayor Mcnebo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do you have any requests for public comment at this time?
I do.
You do? Okay. So, this opportunity for members of the public to comment will be for items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item on the agenda, excuse me, they can't, they can't discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. We also might request a brief response from the staff to questions raised during public comment, and we may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Thank you. Mr. Isaac Jasper.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. So, I was here on numerous occasions for problems with my unit, with a lot of other units within the Highlands, and I'm here today to let you guys know what your building inspector told me and a couple other individuals. I'm here to advocate for a family. I'm just going to use Rick. He asked me not to use his last name. Rick's family just moved in about maybe six and a half months ago, for which they moved in during COVID, so they weren't able to see their unit, you know, like a normal person would pre, you know, pre-COVID. And a couple months in, they had, you know, problems with their washer. Now, the situation is that they have a bubble that has arose in their bathtub from basically them painting over rust and not having no, having no regard for, you know, someone's feet getting, you know, injured. They have a cut, rust being there. Numerous occasions where they've used COVID, the property management and the maintenance team, to not work on anything that needs to be repaired, my unit including. I've had to call the gas company out because they didn't want to come in my unit after being approved 25% occupancy for maintenance work because of COVID. So, I had to call the gas company because I had 10 insufficient combustions in my water heater. I came to you guys on numerous occasions about my water heater. I'm now in a position to where I feel like it's disrespectful for your building inspector to tell us to move out, find somewhere else to live, when we are comfortable living in the place that we are, when we just need adequate repairs, and we need adequate accountability for that property management and for the residents like myself. So, I wanted to address you guys about that because I think that's bull crap. Him being an individual who works for the city should be an advocate of the residents of this city. So, for him to tell me after I told him that there was a faulty balcony where it has multiple dry rot, it has multiple cracks that he, months ago, asked for them to be sealed, for things to be inspected, called him previously, this was not even a week ago, and he told me to move out. I'm not moving out. I'm not giving up. I'm not backing down. I need this, this city to understand that the renters here are just as important as the homeowners. And that individual who works for the code enforcement, that's unacceptable. You don't tell nobody to move out. I've dedicated my life, two years I've dedicated here, and I'm not moving. I'm not leaving. I'm not doing any of that. So, I need him to do his job so that I could do my job for the individuals that are residents of that community, which I'm doing now. A lot of them have work. They go to work.
Thank you, Mr. Jasper. And Mr. City Manager, you'll follow up on that?
Yes, I will, Mayor.
Thank you. And we have all the follow-up information we need, so thank you so much. I appreciate you spending the time to come out and letting us know about that.
I want one of these people to speak up on that. But I want them to speak quietly. That's ridiculous. There are multiple individuals within the city who live in the Highlands.
Sir, sir, you've had your opportunity to speak. Staff will follow up with you. This is not on the agenda tonight, so this council cannot discuss it or respond to you.
You guys are on the agenda.
It is not on the agenda. Staff will respond to you appropriately. Thank you.
All right. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business, so we will move on to new business, first of which is the item number five on your agenda, Historical and Cultural Activities Committee Members' Resignations and Authorization to Post Notice of Vacancy. Madam City Clerk, Debra Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Debra Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is the Historical and Activities Committee Members' Resignations and Authorization to Post Notice of Vacancies. As you know, the Historical and Cultural Committee is a seven-member committee that is appointed by the mayor, subject to council approval, and serves four-year terms. Recently, on April 27th, Committee Treasurer Shirley Hoag submitted her written resignation, resigning from the committee effective immediately. Also, on April 27th, staff received a voicemail message from Committee Chair Ann Pettah, resigning her position as well. With the resignation of Ms. Pettah and Ms. Hoag, the Historical and Activities Committee has two regular member vacancies. After acceptance of these two resignations, city council, two city council staff recommends that the city council direct the city clerk to post notice of vacancies pursuant to Government Code Section 54974. The city clerk will then begin accepting applications beginning May 14th through June 11th from residents who may wish to serve on the committee, and those vacancy notice and application information will be dispersed through a press release and posting on the city's website and reader board. Upon closure of the application process, staff would provide the applications for city council review at its June 22nd, 2021 meeting, and at that meeting or a subsequent meeting, subject to the council's approval, the mayor shall appoint new committee members. Also, the city clerk would look for direction to send each of these members the city council's appreciation letters. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Questions of staff at this time? Have any other members indicated that they wanted to resign as well, or will they main, will they continue on this?
I have, I have not received any resignations from any other members via written resignation nor via telephone as well.
Have you spoken with any of them?
I received an email from one individual, and she indicated, she was just looking to see if we were going to be holding a meeting via Zoom, and at that time, I'd found out that we were not able to have that meeting, and she just indicated she was not able to attend but did not state that she would not be attending. That was Ms. Rosen, Rosenkild. And Ms. Smith, she was willing to attend via Zoom as well, and she had called me, asking me if the committee was continuing, and I told her that the legislative body had not made any decision on whether or not they were going to not have any more committee meetings, so at this time that we were still going to continue and that it was at the description of the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, bring it back to council for discussion and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignations and direct the city clerk to prepare and send a letter of appreciation and post the notices of vacancies.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnebo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item six is the 28th Amendment to Law Enforcement Services Contract 94-797 with the County of San Bernardino Sheriff's Department to provide law enforcement services for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 to the City of Grand Terrace. Mr. City Manager, G. Harold Duffy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Further record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. With me tonight, I also have Lieutenant Lane, and he's, he'll be jumping in, providing some information for us tonight. So, as the mayor indicated, this is the law enforcement contract for FY 2122. This staff report supports ensuring fiscal viability through the review and monitoring of contractual agreements and expenditures, and maintaining public safety by continuing adequate staff levels for law enforcement services in our community. The Grand Terrace has contracted with San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department since 1994. For city council review is the 28th Amendment to the contract. The dollar value for that is $2,269,316. The services we'll be receiving is enforcement of all state statutes, enforcement of city ordinances, traffic enforcement, specialized enforcement such as arson, homicide, juvenile, narcotics, and also attendance at city council meetings. As the council is also aware, in addition to, I'm sorry, we have the staffing levels would, would be one lieutenant at .21%, or 7.5 hours per week, or annual 390 hours. We have a sergeant at .9% of the time, 32.5 hours per week, or 1,690 hours annually. We have detective, deputy sheriffs, office specialists, motor pool services, dispatchers. So, we get all that services for the total amount of the contract. In addition, the council is also well aware that in case, when there are significant issues that arise within the city, we have the full force of the Sheriff's Department behind us. So, Lieutenant Lane has brought together some stats that he wants to share with you in terms of what's happened over the last couple of years.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Thank you, Earl. So, in preparation for introducing this new contract, I wanted to share with you some data that kind of breaks down where we were at in 2020 comparatively to 2019. So, so this is information that's generally derived from our annual report, which has not been published yet for 2020. We're still waiting for that, but I was able to get some numbers out of it. And what we see here is that we took almost a total of 15,000 calls for service. Those include calls from the community asking for law enforcement services, as well as self-initiated calls that the deputies start on their own. We took a total of 1,151 reports. We arrested 436 people. That number represents adults only. It does not represent any juveniles that were arrested, and that's bookings only. Technically speaking, a citation that we issue to somebody is considered an arrest. However, those figures are not included in this, so that number's going to be a little bit higher. Total traffic collisions in the city that we took in 2019 was 42, and our average response time to Priority One calls was just a little over eight minutes. We look now at 2020, and we can see that we saw a bit of an increase in the total calls for service and ERs taking arrests, and I don't have a side-by-side, so I'm going to flip back really quickly there. Arrests were down, and, and I would say that there's a correlation there with direction that certain legislation has taken the actions of law enforcement, alternatives to bookings such as citations. Not, not everybody that used to go to jail goes to jail anymore. There are other avenues that we take, so that's, that's represented there in that decrease. Collisions is at 49, and, and even with the calls for service increase, we were able to lower our response time to just about seven and a half minutes. So, I think that's indicative of, of our ability to still get to calls in a really timely manner. Specifically related to traffic, in 2019, we saw a total of citations for traffic. This includes both misdemeanors and infractions. Infractions are your equipment violations, your registration violations and whatnot. Misdemeanor citations would include driving without a license, driving on a suspended license, things of that nature, DUI. In 2019, there was a total of 619. In 2020, we saw some, some increase in those number as well. So, we had a total of 836 citations during the year of 2020. And if you remember going back to about October, where we were talking extensively about the priority of traffic in the city, we took some steps to try to really enhance the services that we provide specifically related to the enforcement. We were able to divert some very highly trained traffic units to come into the city on other days when they weren't working to provide really, really strict traffic enforcement proactive measures. We saw throughout the months, October, November, December, and then into January, a rather, rather steep increase in the number of stops and citations, and, and that continued until, and I don't know that we have a slide for that.
We don't.
But, but we were able to take some, some really sort of creative measures to, to really focus on that issue, and I think we saw some great results from that. When the time comes to do the annual reporting, when we have all that data and we're ready to put, make a presentation on that, I'll have that information for you to show how that trend was actually looking. And I believe...
Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. And with that, with that, this is the staff's recommendations that we approve the 20th Amendment with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. And I'm available for any questions, and also Lieutenant Lane is available.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy. Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Are there questions of staff at this time? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Bring it back to council for deliberation, consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the 28th Amendment to Law Enforcement Services Contract Number 94-797 with the County of San Bernardino Sheriff's Department to provide law enforcement services for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract, subject to city attorney's approval as to form.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnebo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So, on to item number seven, which is a city council and also a successor agency item. This is the dissolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace and related actions. Interim Finance Director, Mr., is it Shay or Shea?
Shay.
Shay.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. Staff received direction at the April 27th meeting to come forward with this information regarding the dissolution of the successor agency. So, the staff report will cover the following. Property tax revenues, amendment number one to the loan agreement, amendment to the repayment schedule for the SERF loan, amending the long-range property management plan, declaring property at 22747 Barton, Barton Road exempt surplus, purchase and sale agreement, and then approving the Second Amendment to the last and final ROPS. And then dissolution of the successor agency. So, here's the schedule of our property tax revenues. So, what you have there is the actual fiscal year 2018, 19, 2019, 2020, with the projections for 2021. As you can see, in fiscal year 1920, we took in just a little under 4 million, but the projections for 21, 2021 are less, and that's due to the RPTTF amount being reduced because of the Chula Vista versus Sandoval case. And then, this is the property tax VLF swap. Back in 200405, when the state was going through troubles, they kind of restructured. So, this money comes from the state, and it's called property tax in lieu of VLF. And so, it's based, its growth is based on the assessed value growth of the city each year. So, whatever our property tax growth rate is, that's the same rate applied to this. So, if the successor agency is dissolved, you can see that last column, the secure taxes, which is our 19% of the 1%, goes from 420,000 to 2.4 million. We lose the property tax statutory payment of 240,000, and then the residual receipts. So, overall, it's about a $750,000 increase from the prior year. So, and then this shows our share of the 1%, which is 19.67, 57. And then this is kind of a projection for five years without the RDA. So, any questions on the revenues?
Can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
You kind of, kind of swept that one through.
Okay. So, this just shows the growth, the projected growth over five years if, because the entire city is in the redevelopment agency, and if we revert back, then this is kind of how it will grow or projected to grow over the next five years.
Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Robles?
Yeah. To kind of do a recap, so about nine years ago, we were going through this dissolution of redevelopment agencies, and this, this previous city council floated some bonds that we weren't unable to spend. So, we've gone through advocating, getting rid of them. So, we finally got to the point where we defees the bonds, but we were told what was going to be an increase of 550,000 to the property base, and then we were told that 200 and some was going to come out. So, now that number is 750,000. Is that going to be net property taxes to the base increase to the base each year?
Well, the, the base is going to go up by new growth, if you have new things or people selling their, their houses, or 2% a year if you don't sell your house. That's how the base grows, either by people selling their houses, building a new house.
Yeah, but RDA ate away at that base.
Well, the RDA is gone now. There, that, it'll all revert back to the city. There'll be no more increment, so the base will revert back.
Right. So, that's the change.
Yes.
So, with the base reverting back, we're going to recognize about 750,000 going forward.
Based on what they're doing to the RPTTF, yes. Because, you know, if we were still collecting 1.9 million, you know, on the RPTTF, we probably would let this thing go out to five years, but we're not going to. And so, the whole city being in the redevelopment, she kind of hampers the growth of the general fund. So, that's, the, the base here is up on top, and it's like 1.3 billion, so. But that, that will grow by 2% or people selling their houses or building new houses, so.
But we're going to have, what I'm trying to get is, there's going to be a fundamental increase to the property tax revenues.
Mr. Duffy?
The answer to that is yes. And so, once you dissolve the successor agency, we'll revert back to our AB8 distribution, where we get our, everyone gets a straight 19%. Ms. Shea referenced the Chula Vista versus Sandoval, and that's where, before that case was, was found, once you dissolve the bond, once, once, once you did the, of the bonds, you ended up getting that $500,000. But the next year, Chula Vista came in, and it allows the, the agencies that have a pass-through agreement to not only get their pass-through, but also get the RPTTF residual that we have a larger share of. So, we're down to a very small amount, back to the original base, where people that got passed through actually kind of double-dipped and, and kind of threw us off of the AB8. What this will do, it'll take us right back to the regular distribution, and we'll have the straight property tax of that $1.2 billion. There's, there's $12 million to be distributed, and we get 20%. And then, as that grows, we, we still get our 20%.
Right. Because I'm trying to get the public and probably the council to understand.
Sure.
Okay. So, we went through, we weren't quite, we had to fees, but we hadn't dissolved the agency.
That was correct.
So, once we defees, there was a, a gain, but now that we dissolve the agencies, there's no more siphoning away from, from the tax revenues. So, now the revenues are whole, and we're in a different position than we've been in since we had RDA and bonds against it.
Yes. There are no more redevelopment obligations. And so, basically, with the dissolving of the agency, you said there are no more obligations, no more property, the successor agency is gone, and we're right back to the basic AB8 distribution.
Thank you.
And you can see between the 18, 19, 19, 20, the over $500,000 growth in the RPTTF, and that was that 500,000 from the defeases, so. the over $500,000 growth in the RP TTF, and that was that 500,000 from the defeases, so.
And then we went back because of the.
Correct case.
Okay, and then we're forward again. Okay, thank you.
Once this is resolved. Councilmember Allen, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, I want to ask either one of you gentlemen who can answer this. Is, is this action on our part in response to Chula Vista versus Sandoval? Any at all? Does that play into any of this?
Well, it does, but remember, the state's overall goal was for cities to wind down and end redevelopment. So we'd taken the proper steps, this is finishing off what we should have, what we should have been doing. We have an urgency now because of that particular case.
But my reason for asking that is because was there a final ruling issued on that case? Has, will the case be appealed? And if it does get appealed, would it affect us, have any effects on us if we, you know, go through with this?
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not aware of any appeal at this point, and, you know, I, I, I don't know how successful it would be.
Well, just, just to make a point is that the, the Supreme Court refused, the Cal Districts refused to hear the case, so it's.
So they sent it back to the legislature, and this is what I had heard, and then to, and said, you know, if it needs fixing, fix it to the legislature. And I'm just curious, by us taking this action, if we, if we go through with this dissolution, then any changes the legislature makes still won't have an effect on us, is that correct?
That was correct. It will not. And, and what we're doing tonight is exactly what the government, the state set out to do in 2011. They wanted to wind down and end redevelopment agencies, and we are actually right in line with doing just that.
Agreed, 100%. I mean, that, that was the whole concept of dissolution. Many agencies have obligations, so they don't have, they're not in the position that we are to be able to pull it out. But we, we have just one property, we have limited obligations at this point that we can resolve and shut down the agency. So we're in a unique position.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right, any requests to speak on this item?
That was just that one.
Yeah, so that's just the introduction, so there's more coming.
I'm sorry.
We're just going to stop at the end of each section, see if there's any questions instead of going all the way through it, so.
All right, very good. Continue.
So the first thing we have to do is the city and the RDA entered into a loan agreement, and that was back in April 12th of 2011, to repay a loan owed by the city to the former agency in the amount of $3,389,000. The loan agreement did not have a prepayment clause. So what we're bringing to you is an amendment to that loan agreement to allow for us to immediately repay that loan once the amendment is approved. The balance is $885,797. And so we need to amend the loan agreement for that. So any questions on the loan agreement?
Any questions on the loan agreement? All right. Seeing none, please continue.
Okay, second thing we have to do is we, the, the successor agency owes the housing fund, they borrowed $448,000 from its low mod income housing fund to pay for the SERAF augmentation fund loan. The current balance of the loan is 248,636. That repayment schedule does not include a clause for immediate repayment as well, so we need to amend that agreement to allow the successor agency to immediately repay the city.
Any questions on this repayment? All right, seeing none, please continue.
All right. So as part of, the city attorney just mentioned, we just have one parcel left, and that's located just down here by City Hall. But it's included on our long-range property management plan as for future development. But the city would like to purchase that property. And so in order to that, we have to have it designated as governmental use. So that's what we're bringing forward, is to amend our long-range property management plan to designate the use as governmental. And then here's where the property is, and there's a close-up right there. Any questions?
Was there an item before the planning commission to perhaps rezone that?
Robert can, or Adrian.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, there was an item yesterday evening. Under state law, whenever the, the city is going to be part of a transaction to accept real property or sell real property, there has to be a finding of that the property is in general conformance with the general plan, substantial conformance with the general plan. And my understanding is that the planning commission was able to make that finding. It's just that making sure we're compliant with planning law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Please continue.
Okay, so according, the, the property needed to be declared exempt surplus, and the successor agency currently owns the property located at 22747 Barton Road. The property is listed on the successor agency's long-range property management plan as future development, and is therefore surplus land as defined by the Act. The City of Grand Terrace desires to acquire the property for general facility use such as a library or community center. Concurrent with the exemption finding, the successor agency hasn't approved an amendment, hopefully to the long-range property management plan designating it as government use. So we need the, the property to be declared exempt surplus.
Any questions regarding this request? All right, please continue.
And so as part of the city purchasing that property, what you have before you is a purchase and sale agreement for the parcel. Once again, for the people at home, the property is located at 22747 Barton Road in the City of Grand Terrace, and the APN is 0276-20254. The city received an appraisal dated April 29th, '21, which valued the property at 144,000. The purchase and sale agreement includes an escrow period of no later than 30 days. The proceeds of the sale will go to the successor agency funds, and the intent is to seek approval to utilize the funds to pay off the successor debts, with the excess being distributed to the affected taxing entities. The property can be purchased either with general fund or general facilities fund money.
Questions on this item?
And there's a copy of the property there, picture.
Councilmember Allen?
That's property number two in this packet that you made for us?
Yeah, sir.
So. Okay. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do have one correction, if I may.
All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. The purchase and sale agreement calls for an escrow period that basically, close of escrow is no later than November 30th of 2021, and the thought process is we want to ensure that all the dominoes in effect that have to occur before then occur before we're required to close. If there's anything that doesn't go right, we don't have to close for whatever reason.
Okay. That's a good clarification. Thank you very much.
And that's a very poor copy of the appraisal report.
Can you read that to us?
No. It says 144,000. You have a whole copy of the appraisal in your packet, so. And questions? No? All right. So after we do all these items, we're required to amend our ROPS. The first ROPS was, the last and final ROPS was approved by the DOF in August of 2018. The countywide oversight board approved a first amendment to the last and final ROPS, which also approved by the DOF on October 3rd. So in order to complete all the aforementioned items, we have to amend and file our second and final amendment to the ROPS, which includes a $250,000 administrative cost coming back to the successor agency fund. The approval of the last and final ROPS and carrying out of the payments and transactions will allow the successor agency to be eligible for dissolution for Health and Safety Code Section 34187. Any questions?
On the administrative fees, how does that, how does that compare to the cost it's taking for us to go through these processes administratively?
I think the biggest cost you have is the attorney fees, and I'm not, and then the HDL fees. It's got to be less than the 250, so.
But we don't know if this covers that cost?
We're hoping so.
So we don't know?
We believe, I, I believe it'll cover that cost. This might be a little bit more than what we need, but this is, this is actually the statutory minimum that they.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just wondering if that's in the ROPS, that's what we're getting, and I want to make sure that, that we have a handle on what our costs are.
That, that should be, that should be just enough for us to complete this.
Okay. And this is it? So if we don't get this approved, or if we get part of it approved, we have to live with the, the part that doesn't get approved? Because it's the second, it's the second amendment, and that's all we get?
Everything is contingent, so if they don't approve certain items, they probably won't approve that final ROPS either, so.
Okay. Questions? Mayor Protem Hussey?
This is an overall question. Are we done with all the resolutions? Because I'm going to ask this question at the end.
Have we gone over all the resolutions?
I mean, do you have any more?
Everything that you're asking for.
One more.
Do you have any more presentation?
One more.
Okay, I'll ask out to the.
Okay. So dissolution of the successor agency, upon the countywide oversight board approval and the DOF's approval of all the aforementioned items, and the completion of these activities, which would be, you know, buying the land, paying the loans back, the successor agency will be eligible for dissolution for Health and Safety Code Section as follows. All enforceable obligations have been retired or paid off as applicable. All real property has been disposed of pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34181 and, or 34194, and all outstanding litigation has been resolved. There, there is no outstanding litigation. So this is a schedule from last time, it kind of shows where the money's going. So sell the property out of the city, 144, end of the successor agency, repayment of the city loan, 885. We have a, just a little over 482,000 in bond proceeds left, and then the SERAF loan, 248. So total out from the city is 1,029, and then 1,264 will then be redistributed to the affected taxing entities. Sorry, I forgot you had these fancy things in there. And so we estimate there'll be a little bit, about 1, 1.2 million, 1,259,000 that will be in the successor agency funds that will be distributed. And the City of Grand Terrace's general fund is 19.971, which would be about $251,000 after all the transactions are completed. So now we're done, so.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
The question is the overall, it's an overall question. What did the RDA do for the city, and what do we gain out of it? I know we've been buying property and stuff, but can you just summarize it, Mr. Deppi, what the RDA did for the residents and taxpayers of the city?
Sure. So during the research for this particular item, I went back, and so there were some improvements at Richard Rollins Park, so some park improvements did occur. There was the, an agreement with, there was an agreement with other agencies to help with supporting services like, so when the, when the redevelopment agency started, originally it was a, a set timeframe. And then the cities said, we want to extend this timeframe. And so then, then, then the other agency says, no, and they were going to be suing. So part of the settlement that we had was with, we were able to work with like the fire county fire to be able to, to help us with, with, with the fire station, or in terms of incremental tax sources helping us, helping us build that. So there were properties that were acquired, there were some city facilities that were being built, like, like I said, the, the parks facility. But it's, you know, it's an awful lot of money that, that happened over the years, but those are really the things that you can point to in terms of some of the, some of the facilities that were helped build and, and with those resources.
So do you think that the city got as bang for its buck on this? I mean, do you think we spent our RDA funds wisely?
Well, I think if you could have used that $20 million in bond proceeds, I definitely would have been able to help you spend that wisely. You know, and, 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 you know, during the time, over the years, I, I'm not sure what the circumstances are, but you can't look back to see big projects that you utilize over, over time. But I, I don't know the situation at the time.
I know we got a lot of projects now with it because of RDA.
Well, in, in a sense, the properties which they acquired over time, this council has, you know, that was one of the first things you did, was you went through and you sold all those properties out. So now you're seeing those properties start to develop. The Lewis Project, the Greens Group Project, the Taco Bell, not Taco beside, but the Wingstop, and there's, there's multiple across the board.
So one thing I like about it is being debt-free for our residents, and, you know, I know, pretty conservative, and we like paying off our debt, so. But thank you for your answer.
Sure.
Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Robles?
Thanks, Mayor. On page 10 of this packet you gave us, it, at the top of the page, it says, property number two's estimate of current value is 115,000. And, but if, am I correct in understanding that, that we're going to pay 144,000 for it, is that correct? Page 10.
Number 10.
How are these numbered?
Top of page 10.
So this is, this report, dated November 13th, 2014, there was another report that was completed amending this, and the value was 165, 165. And so we did the latest appraisal that you have in the packet, is, is appraised at, I think, 144.
Okay, so, but, so does this mean the estimate of current value in, in 2009? Or is this the estimate of the current value today? Or whenever this was made?
This was made in November 13, 2014.
Such the old value.
So that's the, that's what, so when it says estimate of current value, it was current in 2014? Is that what you're meaning? Is that what that means?
That is, that is correct, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Robles?
I, I mean, when, when, when these bonds were floated, we were not able to spend any of those monies, correct?
I'm not sure. I wasn't here at the time.
Well, I mean, you, you couldn't. By law, you could not spend any of those bonds that were floated after the dissolution of RDA. So there's, so there's no benefit from these bonds that, that we're defeating. So any properties we're discussing were not bought under these properties. The other thing is, how much were we spending on debt service for 10 years for bonds that we couldn't spend?
About 2 million.
So we're spending 2 million a year for, for bond proceeds that, that we couldn't spend.
That's correct.
So what I want everyone to understand is that we're going back to how government was supposed to run. You pay your property taxes to pay for your general police, fire, health, and safety, and this is what we're going back, and the 750,000 as of today that we're going to be, start recognizing is substantial for a city this small. And I'd like to move adoption of, of all the recommendations. Do they have to all be read?
I'll go through that in a second. We also have to have public comment before we.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Any, any further questions? Okay, any, any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
If I may, I, I want to make, make one point. I'm going to ask Mr. Q to briefly go over the dissolution process itself, just so the council is aware of it.
I don't know, I have a motion that's ready, raring to be made. I want that motion, I want to collect it.
I hear you.
Doesn't have a second.
Hold that thought. Go ahead. Mr. Assistant City Attorney.
Before he does. So just as a reminder, what, what I mentioned last time is that, you know, there's a lot of dominoes that have to fall correctly time-wise, and different agencies. We have HCD involved regarding the surplus land, we have DOF, County Oversight Board, so there's a bunch of moving parts. Everything has to go properly for it to go right. We're hopeful it will. We've received indications from all of them that seem like we're in good, going forward properly, but just want to make the.
So you've had preliminary discussions with those that.
Staff has had preliminary discussions with DOF.
Okay, and they said, sure, plausibly it. Okay. And they said, sure, plausibly it sounds okay until we see it?
That is from what we understand, yes. And now, Mr. Q?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Robert Q. I'm your Assistant City Attorney. I wanted to talk briefly about the dissolution process for the agency. The normal process under the statute says it's a two-step, two-step process. The agency, once it's done paying off its debts, selling its properties, et cetera, it, it makes a request to the Oversight Board to dissolve, basically. The Oversight Board has about a 30-day period to review that. And then at that point, assuming they approve it, the DOF then has a 30-day review of that. And then once that's done, they give us final instructions on what to do exactly to finalize, you know. Some agencies have furniture, that sort of thing, to get rid of that, that sort of stuff. Once that's done, we notify the Oversight Board that we're done. And they do a final resolution and that's that. So what we're doing here is that we're trying to front-load it a little bit to kind of anticipate the deadlines we have in fall. So we're going to be requesting, as you see in your, in your, in your packet, the resolutions are requesting a contingent request to dissolve and a contingent final request to dissolve, giving staff the authority to notify the Oversight Board once all of that's done. And we're currently working with the Oversight Board on making sure all that works out perfectly. And, you know, they, they have the documents right now. They're reviewing it at this time. But, but like Mr. Guerra said, we, we are working closely with the county and also with the Department of Finance on these issues.
And what would the downside be to moving through this process?
The downside in terms of?
Of voting to move forward?
There is no downside.
Yeah, there is, there's real no downside. I guess the worst case scenario is that we run into a bump, as Mr. Guerra had indicated.
So what, what we're, what we're on right now with the timeframe that we're laying out is we're trying to meet the next tax roll. And, and if we don't meet these days, we're going to miss that tax roll. That, that's, that's the downside. We're on this, if all the dominoes fall into place, we're going to be fine. We're going to meet the tax roll and you'll realize everything that we showed you, showed you tonight. And, and so one of the things that's important for us to do too is that once we complete the process tonight, there are, there are, as it goes forward with the Oversight Board. So for us, we are actually meeting the requirements of the state to dissolve the successor agency. And so we should also reach out to our legislative representative. Because while we have talked to the DOF, they have a certain timeframe that they can, they can review our documents. But we talked to the DOF and we are following the guidelines which they gave us. But we should apply all the resources that we have, including our legislative advocates, to be able to make sure that we, that once we reach these milestones, that we, they actually don't take the, their, their amount of time that they, they can do and look at our issues right away so we can meet the state's goal and dissolve the redevelopment agency.
Okay. And so if we miss the, the window for the tax rolls that are coming up, then that just, that's an adjustment to our budget as we go forward. But, but that doesn't mean that necessarily this whole thing, this whole exercise expires. It just means it's taking longer than what we would like it to.
That is correct. That means it'll, it'll fall in the next cycle, not this cycle.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, Councilmember Robles, you are going to make a motion. Would you still like to do that? And I know you have a question of the City Attorney.
No, I, I made the motion. It's just waiting for a second.
Okay. So, so your motion is staff recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there are, of the recommendations that are shown on the agenda, there are 10 recommendations. Three of them pertain to City Council actions and the remainder are for successor agency board actions. So I, I could do one of the following. I could reference the numbers rather than read the titles. Or I could read the titles. It's whatever your preference is. Yeah, I'm more likely to read the titles, just so there's no ambiguity.
So there's no confusion?
Do we need two motions?
We would need two motions.
We will need one as a successor agency also, yeah.
So how about I'll read the resolution titles and then ask for a motion? So, and I'll do all of them collectively for all City Councils and all successor agency? Is that comfortable for you?
It's okay for me.
Okay. So then the, for the City Council, the appropriate motion would be to read by title only, waive reading of, and adopt the following. So recommendation number one, resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace approving an amendment to a loan agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the successor agency dated April 12th, 2011, and authorizing the mayor to execute such amendment, subject to the city attorney's approval as to form. Item number seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace approving the purchase and sale agreement for real property and joint escrow instructions to purchase the property located at 22747 Barton Road in the City of Grand Terrace, APN 0276-202-54. And recommendation number eight, as to the first portion, appropriate 144,000 dollars from the Community Facilities Fund to account number 19-190-790-790. Is there a motion and a second?
I move the item.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. So we'll vote and then we'll go through the successor agency ones, all right?
Correct.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And so as the successor agency?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So with respect to the successor agency, it is, I'll just quickly go through them. Seven, they're number two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, and 10. But I'll go through them each one. So the first one would be, for all resolutions, it would be to read by title only, waive reading of, and adopt. The first resolution is a resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace approving an amendment between the City of Grand Terrace and the successor agency dated April 12th, 2011, and authorizing the Chair of the Successor Agency Board to execute such amendment, subject to Agency Council's approval as to form, and San Bernardino Countywide Oversight Board and California Department of Finance approval. Item number three, a resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace affirming and approving an amendment to the repayment schedule for the Supplemental Educational Revenue Augmentation Loan, approved pursuant to successor agency resolution number 2017-01 and Oversight Board Resolution number 2017-01. Number four, a resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the Six, of the City of Grand Terrace amending its long-range property management, management plan by changing the property disposition designation of a property located at 22747 Barton Road in the City of Grand Terrace, APN 0276-202-54, from future development to governmental use. Number five, a resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace declaring real property located at 22747 Barton Road in the City of Grand Terrace, APN 0276-202-54, as exempt surplus land and making findings related thereto. Number six. And let me look at something. Okay, number six, a resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace approving the purchase and sale agreement for real property and joint escrow instructions to sell the property located at 22747 Barton Road in the City of Grand Terrace, APN 0276-202-54, to the City of Grand Terrace. Number eight, appropriate fi, appropriate 5,000 dollars from the successor agency. Number nine, the resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace approving a second amendment to the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget. And lastly, number 10, a resolution of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Grand Terrace requesting the Oversight Board to approve the successor agency's request for dissolution of the successor agency, authorizing the Executive Director notice, to send notice to the San Bernardino County Oversight Board pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34187E2, and making related findings thereof. And quickly, Madam Mayor, I have a note here from my colleague. The title for the successor agency on the city loan has a typo. It should say amendment to a loan agreement. So that is item number... Two. So we'll clarify that in the language.
Okay.
So with that motion, is there a motion and a second?
I'm, I move the resolution for the successor agency.
Okay. So, so Board Member Robles and Vice Chair Hussey is the second?
For all the successor agency items, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Board Member Allen?
Yes.
Board Member Robles?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hussey?
Yes.
And Chair Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was a lot to say. Thank you for reading that. All right, item number eight, FY 2122 Budget Development Guidelines and Budget Schedule, presented, co-presented by G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, and Terry Shea, Interim Finance Director. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is the 2021 Budget Development Guidelines. We want to present this to the council. And consistent with our 2020 vision, the goal, it meets goal number one, to ensure fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenues received and expenditures dispersment, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. We're on the end, till end of that. Our guidelines. So we want, we're going to submit a one-year budget. Our base budget will reflect changes in staff to pre-pandemic levels to execute core services. There will be an inflationary factor will be built in to apply to a proposed budget. The contract will be reviewed, all contracts will be reviewed to reduce or eliminate services because of in-house activity. Any service level or staffing adjustments will be separately identified. And then a resolution for increased compensation for the City Council will be prepared in accordance with Government, Government Code Section 36516. Also, just a reminder to the council that we were always shooting for at a minimum of sustainable budget. So here's the chart that we've gone through over the years. And just kind of look at how this works. A sustainable, unsustainable and solvent budgets with revenues are less than expenditures. We'd see, we see a vulnerable budget where revenues exceed expenditures, but we do not have a two-month reserve or rainy day fund. A sustainable budget is revenues exceed expenditures and we have a two-month reserve in the rainy, which is the rainy day fund. Then a healthy budget is when revenues exceed expenditures and they continue to show growth year over year and the city maintains a two-month reserve, above a two-month reserve for, over rainy day fund. So as you can see, the cycle that we've gone through over the years. And so while, here's an example, while the revenues here were 4.6 million, the expenditures were 3.5. But we did not have a rainy day fund during these times. So when we see things get into the, we're in the vulnerable phase and we get into sustainable, that means we have that rainy day fund. And then in last year's budget, we actually ended up with revenues that were exceeding year upon year. So the proposed budget schedule is as follows. So there'll be a budget in the park presentation at Richard Rollins in Veterans Freedom Park. This is our community outreach on May 19th and May 27th. So this is our opportunity to take City Hall to the public versus having them come to City Hall. Give them some feedback, share, share with them what we do and ask them what they'd like to see. Then we're going to have a virtual 2122 budget workshop of community outreach on May 26th. Will be on social media and also on channel, on our Channel 3. And then we're going to come to the council, a council presentation of proposed budget to the City Council on Tuesday, June 8th. And so my goal is on June the 8th, you will receive a proposed budget that is a complete document. And we will work from that document, a special meeting on City Council meeting, budget deliberations, starting on June, Tuesday, June 15th. And then we will continue from that point in time, hopefully adoption on, on Tuesday, June 22nd. So without available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Questions of staff? Councilmember Allen?
Mr. Duffy, do we have the full rainy day fund right now? Two months operating expenses and all that?
Yes, we do, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Right. Any requests to speak from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll close that and come back to council for consideration of motion and any deliberations at this time.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor, to approve the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Budget Development Guidelines and Proposed Budget Review Schedule.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion? Right. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. We have no requests for future agenda items. We'll go to City Council Communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
I don't have anything to report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I just have a grandma brag. My granddaughter, who swore me in the last time me and Montiel, she won a scholarship for college from, for a part of the Avid Students. And the benefactor was former Mayor Marietta Ferry. So I just was so grateful to our former mayor and so thrilled with my granddaughter's performance in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles, and congratulations to your granddaughter. Mayor Protem Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the board meeting for, well, this was the League of Cities. I guess they're changing their name to Cal Cities. But we talked about, you know about this, the Ontario Loop to Four Miles and down the ground tunnel, going from Rancho Metro Station to Ontario Airport. And it sounded really interesting. I think the big drawback is going to be the environmentalists trying to get everything in there. So that's, that's the holdup. But besides that, we had a chief from Ontario PD that talked about Senate Bill 210. And what that is, is Senator Weiner up there in San Francisco is bringing this bill up and it's to eliminate and only have 24 hours storage for the license plate reader cameras. So it says, "Existing law authorized the Department of California Highway Patrol to retain license plate data captured by license plate reader technology, also referred as the Automatic License Plate Recognition System, ALPR system, for more than 60 days unless the data is being used as evidence for investigation of felonies. Existing law authorized the department to share that, that data to law enforcement agencies for purposes required, both for the ALPR operator and ALPR end user, for those terms are defined. To implement the usage of the privacy implement by ALPR operator and ALPR end user, the length of time the information will be retained as a process, the operator and end user will determine if they destroy to retain information." So right now, you, you could keep 60 days with the data. And that's good for if it's under a hot list, you know, to investigate the crimes. Now, since I've been here and for, you know, you always hear that, you know, we're pushing for more cameras and, you know, license plate readers, you know, throughout the state to help law enforcement because, you know, to keep law enforcement out of the streets. So, so that's been a big help and it's also helped with a lot of crimes. So Senator Weiner wants it just have for 24 hours. So, I mean, if you look at the regular program, 48 hours, it takes 40 hours just to gather all the information, you know, so. And then plus, you might have a crime that you didn't realize occurred until a week later or somebody finally came and got it. So the information's gathered. And I know, you know, that the cameras have helped solve crimes here in Grand Terrace. So the reason why the legislature finds it and declares all the following is well documented that the agency engages in federal immigration enforcement exploding the automatic license plate reader database containing the location of immigrant drivers and part of their efforts to locate and deport Californians. The selling, sharing, and transferring ALRP information by the California State- The selling, sharing, and transferring ALRP information by the California State and local agencies with the out-of-state federal agency is prohibited under subdivision section seventeen-ninety-eight-point-nine-zero-point-five-five of the City Code. Despite existing law enforcement public agencies, the California shares the ALPR information with agencies engaged in federal immigration doc enforcement. Federal legislation is needed to ensure that the ALPR cameras are retained only for imminent compensation and hot list, and avoid being retained for use of purpose of federal immigration. So, basically, they're saying that the, it's being used for immigration, so, I know, like I said, you know, you guys use it for us, and it helped a lot of residents, and it helped, you know, solved a lot of crimes, and it's nice to have the cameras there, and, um, so anyway, Senator Weiner's backing this, and he has a strong backing, so, that's what we discussed on there, and I know all the law enforcement's don't agree with it, and the Cal Cities, the league is opposing this, uh, Senate Bill two-ten, so, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hussey. I have, uh, communications that I'll save till next time, but I will say that it was very nice to see construction going on, on Barton Road, and Mount Vernon, Grand Terrace Road, being done very quickly, and at the same time, wonderful to see us working on our roads again. And with that, Mr. City Manager, do you have any communications?
I do, Mayor. Okay, well, let me just tell you that, uh, there should have been, uh, anyway, so what's gonna happen is that, uh, I'm just gonna let you know that there is a senior parade, senior high parade that, uh, the council approves at our previous meeting, uh, that we met, the staff met with the, uh, parents that are planning that, and so, we are scheduled to have that on May twentieth, the parade route will be, uh, it'll start at DeBarry, on DeBarry and Mount Vernon, it'll turn left and go down to Main Street, from Main Street it'll turn right, go down to Michigan, from Michigan it'll turn right and go, uh, go down to, um, Van, uh, go up Van Buren, and go up Van Buren, all the way up to Observation, uh, turn left on Observation, and, and back up on DeBarry, and back, and ending up at the, um, Richard Rollins Park, where they'll be gathering and to give, to give refreshments, and, um, the law enforcement has been actively involved, and, um, public works has been driving the route, so we're working with the parents, and there should be a map going out, uh, tomorrow, I was gonna show you that today on the PowerPoint, that must be sitting on my desk, and I'm sorry, it's not here, and then also, we are going to have the household hazardous waste collection event on the twenty-second of, uh, May, and so, those items will be online, uh, tonight.
What time is the parade?
The parade will start at six-thirty, uh, and, uh, it will last probably until eight, and so, we'll, we'll get advertisement out there on, on the parade.
Councilmember Allen?
Are there gonna be any road closures involved with that?
There'll be temporary road closures, the Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant Lane is actually working on the, the plan now, uh, and he's gonna be using, um, additional law enforcement along with the COPs, uh, and the high school students or the parents that are planning this wanted to extend the opportunity for others to participate in the parade, so there'll be information going out about that, too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, we will recess to closed session, we have one item to consider, which is public employee scheduled performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six, title City Manager, so if you are not here when we return, the next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P.M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures, so at this time, we are in recess to closed session. Open session. Council met and closed session, reviewing one item, public employee scheduled performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six, title City Manager, we gave direction to staff, there are no reportable actions, so at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular City Council meeting to be held on Tuesday, May twenty-first, excuse me, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P.M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office, the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures, so at this time, we are adjourned.
It's okay, Mayor, I've said the meeting was gonna be on the tw-.